To order the regular governing board meeting of the Jefferson Elementary School District, January 8th, 2014 at 7:00 PM. Could we have members present, please?
Joseph Otidy.
Yep.
Marie Brizuela.
Here.
Shaquille Ali.
Here.
Joseph Waters.
Here.
Rebecca Douglas. Here. Okay, and I believe we have some folks from Ben Franklin Intermediate to lead us in the pledge of allegiance tonight.
(singing) Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light what so pearly we had at the twilight's last gleaming whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight, all the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming, and the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Yeah. Do we know if that was Ariel or Tiffany?
Yeah, I think both of them. There should both be on. I don't know who's.
Oh, I see, one at the keyboard. Okay. Well, here, I'll let you two gentlemen give. We have some certificates of thanks for our students who brought us the National Anthem. If you guys mind.
Someone was playing live.
Someone was actually playing live back there, yes. Let's read off the first name there, does it?
Ariel. Good job.
There we go.
Mr. Cervantes, do you want to say a couple of words about your students and what school they're from and a little bit about your program?
Absolutely. Good evening, everybody. My name is Mr. Cervantes. I'm the director of instrumental music at Ben Franklin Intermediate School, just around the corner here in Daly City. We had Tiffany Chang on piano. Let's give her a nice round of applause. And Ariel Cantignac, she's our vocalist for our symphonic band. Thank you for having us there.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Cervantes. Okay, can I make a motion to approve the agenda? Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, and we have a special presentation tonight on school-wide instructional walkthroughs. Did you want to introduce that, Mr. Vidal?
Yes. Mr. Parrish, principal of Benjamin Franklin Intermediate School, will come and share a practice that they've started and are going to continue through the school year at their school site to help improve their instructional program.
Good evening, governing board and cabinet, and all the millions that are watching all across Daly City. That will continue to watch. Before I get started, I just want to say that one of the purposes behind us doing instructional walkthroughs where teachers observing teachers was to help build a community-school climate and break down the isolated walls that, you know, teaching is. You know, obviously, every teacher teaches in a classroom by themselves, and oftentimes we hear of great teaching, and many teachers see that, but don't have the opportunity to see other teachers in action. And so, we started this last May, and our next walkthrough will be in February, and I'll kind of give, share some of that information as I go through this PowerPoint. I think Ms. McCullicott has some PowerPoint presentation to pass to you, so you can all have a copy of it. All right, and so, teachers observing teachers is a professional development tool, and the intention of teacher-to-teacher observations is that the tool, be a tool for professional development and in turn for student learning. The most positive benefit to teacher-to-teacher observation is that it makes teaching a public rather than private act, and that's what I spoke to you a little bit before about, is that we really are trying to open our classrooms to our teachers and for them to learn from each other, also learning from their colleagues, establishing a culture of collegial exchange, and also extending the professional development of some of the things that our district is Some of our desired outcomes are to build skills of members by coming to a common understanding of effective practices and how to support them, to support instructional improvement at a whole-school level by sharing what the team learns and by building upon this knowledge for future professional development, to model collaborative learning, building trust in our community and coming together to share ideas and insight. And so, going into each other's classroom, and you're hurt, you, oftentimes, our first-year teachers through BITSA observe one teacher, but having a team of teachers go together and observe and have some dialogue around those things has proven to be very powerful at our school, and so, we're going to continue with that process. Some of the benefits as an administrator, you know, it's an opportunity to have a reflective dialogue with the teachers, also increase shared responsibility. You know, we talk about it takes a village to raise a child, it takes all of us together as a team to really make a difference, and as an instructional leader of Ben Franklin, and having a leadership team really trying to promote shared decision-making and us working together to really make a change, because I can't do it by myself, teachers can't do it by themselves, it really takes all of us, as well as the parents, participating in that process. An increased trust of collegiality amongst staff, you know, there are teachers at different levels, and some teachers have some insecurities about some things, but we try to break that down by doing it together and not being judgmental about what it is that we're seeing, only stating the facts that we see. Participation in a professional collaborative learning environment, you all are aware of PLCs, professional learning communities, this is just another aspect of trying to build on that. A cadre of self-reliant, confident teachers who love teaching, enrich teacher efficacy, participation in professional collaborative learning community. Teachers benefit also, an opportunity to engage once again in reflective dialogue of what they saw, a focused classroom support where we're in the classrooms, and we're looking at student structured talk, we're looking at student engagement, we're looking at how ELD instruction is happening and constructive meaning, some of the things that our district is supporting through professional development, as well as through our math program. Improvement of classroom practices, support from our peers who are the experts, who are our teachers, our experts, when we share that knowledge with each other, who understand the data demands of the classroom, you know, they're the ones who are actually on the front lines, I'm kind of right behind them, sometimes with them, but they're in there every day working with those students. Satisfaction, you know, getting something out of the work that they do, you know, and being acknowledged for some of the great things that are happening in the classroom. I think it also, you know, reduced the stress, especially for new teachers, because they can see that other people are doing some of the same things and making some of the similar mistakes or challenges along the way. Also, it really creates a welcoming environment for establishing where teachers can come through, come in each other's classroom. And lastly, the comfort of knowing that someone is available to help explain and assist them, that oftentimes, we have a buddy teacher for someone, but as they progress longer into the teaching career, sometimes those things are kind of, no longer happen as much, and so, this really creates an environment where a teacher, no matter what level they are, can always experience and learn something new. The school benefits, increased collaboration once again amongst teachers, the establishment of a PLC, increased focus on student achievement, because in the end, that's what we're trying to accomplish, is increased student achievement, as well as create enthusiasm for the teaching profession, and we all know that the profession has had its ups and downs financially, which makes teachers feel a certain way, or we adding something new, but how do we do something where we have a shared and common, commonality where we can build upon those things, and I believe this process is helping us move in that direction. I met with our leadership team, and we also worked with Rebecca Venduna from the San Mateo County Office of Education, who helped us start this process, and so, as we sat down and we thought, talked, these are what the teachers came up with, you know, stealing good ideas, improve specific parts of our teaching practice, you know, break down the walls of isolation, you know, an open dialogue between the teachers, create school community and trust, and that's one of the key components of that. Finding ways to sort, support each other across disciplines, at the middle-school level, obviously, we have different core areas, and so, we want to be able to see how we can, you know, support each other in that, especially as common core is upon us now, writing across the curriculum, and utilizing things like that that will help support us, and setting a good example for students as adults work together. We want to be the models of achievement, and so, we need to practice that and show that in order for it to be successful. Important elements to be examined when you do that is trust, that was the first thing that come, came out, you know, can we trust each other, is it a value, you know, is it going to be, are you going to be evaluating me, you know, in terms of that, so, it's non-evaluative, non-disruptive, you know, so when we go in the classroom, there's norms around, can you talk to students, or you can't, or you're going to be an observer, you know, all these various components had to be, you know, talked about as we went through that process. One of the key things was, it was voluntary, all right, so, that was the key point, are you willing to do it? And when we did our first one in May of last year, we had 12 teachers who volunteered to participate, and out of 27 teachers, and that was the first time that we did it. Setting a goal as a group, so, this whole process as we went through each month, starting in October, and having conversations, all these things came together. And teacher leadership and empowerment, we're empowering our teachers to work together and being able to bring about change, and so, that's one of the things that we had to look at, and once again, building commonality across the board. So, as we moved into that process, when we go into a classroom, what is it that we want to do, you know, what is the evidence that, that's happening here? So, descriptive evidence, and what is descriptive evidence? It's what you see and hear in the classroom. It's not what you want to see, you know, we want to see a great lesson and all the bells and whistles happening, but that doesn't happen every day, unfortunately. What, what do you think about when you see, or what is, do you think that should happen by being in the classroom? Descriptive evidence is the most helpful when it's specific. So, what are we looking for? So, here's an example, you know, teacher referred, so as we take in our descriptive notes, teachers referred to the textbook as, and asked, what were the branches of government in ancient Greece? What were the three social class groups in Greece? What was the main resource? Teacher asked for volunteers, five students raised their hands. Teacher called on a boy in the front row, and a student answered correctly, you know, so questioning, you know, using questioning as a tool to be able to ask students what's happening. A non-example would be, the teacher asked questions about ancient Greece, students answered all questions correctly. It doesn't really give us any specific feedback in terms of that. Another example, the class read the story, and the teacher asked, how many people did Clifford talk to in the story who said that he would help, you know, so, we're, we're looking at, you know, questions that are going to give us some specific information. What do you want to see in the classroom? What would be worth reflecting on, defining further, or strengthening collectively? So, this is the tool that we used when we had our walkthrough, and so, we, our leadership team met, obviously, we met, made a recommendation to our staff, and it got feedback from them, and so, we're looking at, what's the objective of, the teacher's objective when they go into the classroom? And what is the evidence that the teacher is reaching that objective? And the way, and I'll share the schedule a little later of how it works, so, it says, are you coming in at the warm-up, you know, which is at the beginning of the class, or is it an introduction? Are they at the modeling component, guided practice, independent work, closure? And so, those are, you know, a little check mark, you know, to help a teacher refer to, because they may be coming in the second half or first half. And then, focusing on strategies that help develop English language fluency, so, we're also looking at student engagement techniques, structured student talk, checking for understanding, and ELD strategies. So, those are the four areas that we kind of narrowed it down to, to kind of look at as we went into the classrooms. And the schedule, so when we did our schedule, we sat down and kind of recalibrated again what it is that we were doing in our pre-visit meeting, reviewed, discussed the norms when we're going into classrooms as a group, so that we're respectful for each teacher, and then reviewed the schedule, and then, we visited six classrooms, and we took our notes, and then, we had a debriefing where we reviewed our findings individually, and then in pairs, and then as a whole group, and focusing on the descriptions and the codes that you saw previously, and then we shared out that information. And so, here's an example of the walkthrough schedule that will be happening on February 3rd and 4th, as you can see, so, there's group one and group two, and so, those teachers will be observing Mr. Burke, who's teaching social studies, and Ms. Hanson, who's teaching math, Ms. Brandt, language arts, Ms. Rowley, math, Ms. Smith, language arts, and Ms. Ty, science. And so, that's a schedule of how that would go, and then, the next day, we flip, where those teachers are then teaching, and then other teachers that were teaching will be observing them.
All right, I know, I get it.
Does that, you guys follow that? Okay. And then, we'll have a debriefing all together on February 4th, which is a Tuesday afterwards as a group, and then discuss what our findings were and go through a process. And so, this is a quick note in terms of, we are, we're reading through our notes, we're re-coding things as we're kind of debriefing for different levels, any particular things that really stood out for a person, and then looking at some of the key points and putting those on post-its, and the post-its are color-coded to go with each four categories that you saw previously, so that we can kind of group that information and see where, what comes out of it. So, the process is, share your posted notes in a dyad, triad, group, and then we share out to the larger group. The first time we did it was May 28th and 29th, and so, we shared this at our Falcone meeting, and these are some of the initial takeaways after we visited, and I'll take you a moment to kind of look at some of those as we go through. All of the teachers were really positive about it, as you can see, you know, breaking down the walls, more positive than we thought, you know, great ideas, very positive, made me feel more a part of a team, you know, a lot of positive things that came out, and once again, this was a voluntary act. So, this is our walkthrough timeline, the first time I said I gave you the wrong date in terms of the staff debriefing, but May 20th and 21st, 2013, was the first time we did it, and then we had a group discussion, and then we had a staff debriefing where we shared that out with the staff, and it was so overwhelming that people thought, this was really positive thing, we'll see how we can get it started again. So, February 3rd and 4th, as I shared before, we'll have it again, we'll have a group debriefing, we'll share it with the staff, and then, round three will be in May, and then, in June, our leadership team will come together, have a conversation, because we'll have enough data that we've done it three times to kind of figure out where's our next steps. Thank you very much. Any questions or comments?
In any given classroom, when they go to do the walkthrough, how many teachers would be in the classroom that are observing?
There'll be three teachers.
In each classroom?
Yeah, yeah, there'll be three teachers, yeah, maybe, maybe four, I usually go to, so, there'll be myself and three teachers in some cases, yeah.
And so, this is, it's not evaluation, like you said, but so, this is considered professional development?
Well, the information that we will gather will help us determine where we want to go, right? So, we did once, we got some things, you know, some teachers were like ready to, it felt like really warm and fuzzy the first time, you know, and so, it'll probably feel a little more warm and fuzzy again, you know, and then we'll get that information, and then, you know, figure out our process of, how do we have conversations around what's next? Where do we go from here? What are the things we can focus on that we saw that we can build upon? Or there were some things that we didn't see that, hey, we need to pay attention to those things, and all those things kind of come out during the debriefing.
Mm-hmm. All right. So, the only other question I had was, where did you get the idea to do this type of program?
I mean, I just kind of thought about it myself personally, really, of just thinking about how, I mean, I've been, you know, the principal I've been, this is my 11th year, and just thinking about, how do I just, how do I get teachers to buy into a lot of the different things that we're trying to do here at our school? And the idea was, would people be interested in observing each other, you know, and I just think, seeing what's happening at our school, so, not just me can speak upon it, but each teacher has an opportunity to speak upon what's going on at the school. And so, currently, right now, we'll have 23 out of the 27 teachers, after we do the third round, would have participated, so, there's only four teachers who are kind of on the fence so far. So, after you get everyone a part of it, then that will allow us to kind of move forward.
All right, yeah, that's great, because it's one thing to just say, we want, you know, to increase student achievement, but to actually have some practical ways in place is another thing, and it seems like that, that's the next step from here, is taking what you're learning from these observations and then directly applying that to the young people's achievement.
Exactly, and so, our plan would be to build that into our single plan for student achievement, whatever the financial resources or things that would be needed to execute those things.
Right.
Then we would put that together.
Great.
So, you've already done this, already, you said, right?
We did it once in May 20th and 21st, yes.
So, did, when, when they did that, did, was it hard for some of the teachers not to speak?
You mean to teach or to talk?
No, 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 I mean, the observers, they, they don't really speak, right?
There was definitely, I think it was, the first group that went had a little more anxiety, right, because they were the first ones. The second group got to observe, so then, when they went in, then they kind of already knew what to expect and had a better idea, you know, but overall, we really tried to make sure that it was safe and that we weren't talking about specific teachers, about, we were just talking about what it is that we saw, so that we.
That's good.
You know, de-escalate the, the anxiety, because that was definitely the fir, we had to work through all that.
Yeah.
You know, to get to a point where people would be even willing to do that, to have other people come into their classroom like that.
It sounds great, though, it sounds good.
I had a couple of things that I took notes on and I wanted to mention. One was on page four, and you had important elements to be examined, something that I noticed, setting a goal as a group, very important piece, I think, in that it models the behavior of setting these goals, and this behavior can carry over to the teachers in how they teach with the students, so I like that. Another piece, on page six, the way the questions are asked, where example, non-example, another thing that I like about that is, that's how you ask questions to the kids, so, again, you guys are modeling the behavior that, that can carry over to working with the students. That's an excellent idea. Last thing that I noticed was a posted color-coding, you made it simple enough, so it's reinforcing for the people to do it. The worst thing for me, in, in my situation, I'm thinking, okay, well, if I got to do this extra stuff and it's complicated, you have it simplified, so, just wanted to, you know, give you some positive reinforcement for these.
I appreciate that, thank you very much. I mean, I, you know, we work very hard as principals, and to, to see something come to fruition and happen, I mean, you know, I wrote that all summer, that great feeling of this accomplishment, and that teachers want to continue to do it, it wasn't forced upon them, it's voluntary, and I think that was such a kudos to the staff of Ben Franklin as well.
And did I understand correctly, those kind of four key elements that they wanted to look at, that was, teacher, the teachers working with you came up with what those things that they thought were?
We, myself and the leadership team, and Rebecca from the San Mateo County Office helped us, you know, guide us through this process.
Yeah, that's great, we just, like, like Mr. Waters said, narrow it down to four, because that's about as much as you can think about at once.
Exactly.
And the thing I noticed the most of this, all these pages, is that the same message is almost everywhere, which is great, so, we're focused on exactly what the outcome is going to be.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vidal.
Thank you very much, thank you for having me, and Happy New Years.
All right, Happy New Year to you, too. I guess we don't get to give him a nice little signed thing for coming and presenting to us.
No.
He works well. Okay, that brings us to our communications. I do want to mention at this time that if there are people in the audience who will want to address us during the general comments to addressing the board or on any specific topic, please do fill out a comment card and turn them in to Ms. Kovray over here. Melinda Dart is modeling that behavior for you.
That's how you do it.
She's had practice. Okay, do we have any comments from any administrators? Let's start, I'm going to be different here, I'll start with you, Ms. Hopkins.
I just want to thank the Ben Franklin students and staff for coming tonight, and it was, it's wonderful to hear about walkthroughs at schools, and I know years ago, we had the idea of peer coaching, but this has expanded beyond that, where you really have more people participating, and that whole team effort is just great to hear, so, thank you.
I want to also reiterate what Ms. Hopkins said, I've appreciated what Mr. Parrish has done with his staff with the walkthroughs, it's been exciting to see the growth at the school, too, and just a few reminders for parents, the parents going with children entering seventh grade next year, so your current sixth graders, just a reminder to get that T-DAP booster, and it's coming, and you'll need to have that before entering seventh grade, and then also, our mid-year kindergarten is starting January 21st, and we actually have a pretty full class already enrolled, so, we're excited about that. And that's at George Washington.
Lovely singing, it's a very difficult song to sing, and I'd also like to say, at FDR, we, the, the multipurpose room, the cafeteria was painted during the break, and here it's, we have a happy person over there, and I'm glad that, glad that we do. So, next time you come and go there, you know, step in and take a look at it, brightens up the place a bit.
Okay, and I have a card here, a person wishing to address the board from Melinda Dart. Oh, whoops, you're right.
Oh, it's all right, if you started there, go ahead.
I start, go ahead, you can speak first and then we'll speak, that's, you're up.
All right, thank you.
I didn't put my glasses on, so I couldn't read that line.
Melinda Dart, American Federation of Teachers, Happy New Year to everyone. Also, I wanted to express my appreciation for the wonderful singing from Ben Franklin, and also, the idea of teachers being able to get in and see other rooms, it is really true what Mr. Parrish said about teaching being an isolating profession sometimes, and especially as we all strive to improve our practice, which is going on across the district, it's really great when time can be made for teachers to go in and look at each other's rooms, and TRP has also been doing that for several years, and some other schools have tried to make time to do that, so, it's a great thing to do. I have a few announcements, I'll try to make them quick, on January 29th, at Westlake School, there is a joint PTA and AFT leadership meeting, and that's at 5:30 in Room 9 at Westlake, some PTA leaders and some AFT leaders will be coming together to have dinner and talk about plans for the future. We have some more of our. We have some more of our family education workshops coming up, one January 16th at FDR, and another one on January 26th at MP Brown, that one is called Homework Without Tears, and those are from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. And I'm not sure what the FDR one is, do you remember what it's called?
General Parent Education.
General Parent Education, okay, yeah. And coming up in, in March, we have a free tax advice event from TurboTax being offered at Woodrow Wilson, from, I believe it's 9:00 to 2:00. We'll be getting out more information and flyers to parents about that, but we just want people to know about it and start saving the date.
Do you have an actual date on that?
March 1st, Saturday, yeah, sorry, I didn't say the date. And then, also, the very next weekend at Woodrow Wilson, we have another workshop aimed at parents in the community. And by the way, the TurboTax event is for parents, teachers, and community members, anyone who wishes to come have free tax advice. On March 8th, the program is Reclaim the Promise: Keys to the Core. This is a 9:00 to 1:00 PM workshop aimed at parents on the Common Core Standards in English Language Arts, and there will be workshops in English and in Spanish. So, we will have more information about that and written flyers, but just wanted people to know about it and start saving the dates. Thank you.
That's great, thank you very much, Ms. Dart. Okay. Now, we'll take comments from board members, let's start down here, Mr. O'Teedy?
Usually have many comments about our district and our community, but the only comment I have today is Happy New Year, and Happy New Year to everyone that's here today. I look forward to a awesome 2014, working with everybody, teachers, administrators, community leaders, and parents. Thank you.
First, I'd like to thank Franklin for coming this evening, and Mr. Parrish for doing the presentation. And then, one question I forgot to ask, was, later you can tell me, is, do the teachers leave the classroom vacant? I mean, the kids without someone to watch? No? Okay, good, okay. Anyway, other than that, thank you, it sounds really great, looking forward to seeing the outcome later. And thank Ariel and Tiffany for coming tonight and sharing their wonderful talents with us for the Pledge of Allegiance. And I'd like to ask the President of the Board if she would adjourn the meeting this evening in memory of Charlene Brusuela, our sister-in-law, who lives in Hawaii and who passed away about a week before Christmas. It's unfortunate for that dear family, because my husband's brother died six years ago of cancer, a year later, lost their 26-year-old beautiful daughter to having pneumonia, and I tell you, if your children have an illness and they're sick, whether they're living with you or not, be sure that they get medical attention early on, because she thought she just had bronchitis, and in a matter of a few hours, developed into pneumonia and died. And now, her mother passed away, so that's three, in six years, three members of the family that are gone, and left behind the youngest daughter, and my husband and I are going to try to get over there and see them. So, while Mr. Hanson loves to go to Hawaii for fun, we, every time we've been going there the last few years, it's not been fun, so please say prayers for them. And there was something else I wanted to say, I thank you, Melinda, for giving us all these dates, because that's a big heads up, and I look forward to that, and wish everybody a Happy New Year, and for a real successful year this year.
No.
No comments? Mr. Waters?
Thanks, everybody, for coming out, and I've been hearing a lot of positive things about the school, so keep it up, keep up the good work.
And I do want to also thank everybody who's come tonight, I think I know probably why a lot of you are here, look forward to hearing from you. Thank you to Mr. Parrish and his fine students, and wishing everyone a Happy New Year, and I think in addition to mentioning about the T-DAP, I will remind people, it's still not too late to get your flu shot if you haven't, and they are making noises about the flu season looking potentially bad, so if you haven't done it, run out and get it. That's ended my public service announcement. Okay, Mr. Vidalis, correspondence and comments?
Yeah, I do have one piece of correspondence, but I'll read that later when the item comes up. But I do have a couple of comments. The first is that, over the winter break and just before the winter break, we've been working hard at connecting up our solar panels that are at all of our school sites, and we received authorization to begin generating our own power, so at all our school sites that are now active. In a couple of weeks, I hope, we have a monitor at the district office that will be able to display real-time generation at all, across all the sites, so we should be able to observe what's happening and where it's happening, and then just overall at the district. That'll be exciting. This morning, I had the great opportunity to, to join with the Rotary Club of Daly City and Colma, and every year, the Rotary Club donates dictionaries to classes of 3rd graders at different schools, and so, this morning, we distributed, I distributed, as a representative of the club, dictionaries to the 3rd graders at Garden Village. And next week, we'll distribute at two other schools, and we'll distribute next week at Westlake and at Daniel Webster, and then the following week, we'll distribute for 3rd grade classes at Tobias. And every three to four years, we rotate through the different schools. And I, too, would like to thank Ben Franklin and their efforts to maintain a learning environment, not just for their students, but also for the adults and the teachers in the class, in the classroom. And it's just another example, I think, as Ms. Dart mentioned, of, of a school taking a district focus and expanding on it and building on it and making it their own, and we're happy to see when ownership for different initiatives are taken on by different school sites in their own way.
Thank you, Mr. Parrish. Okay, this brings us to general functions, to the consent agenda, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
We have the unanimous guys over here. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, item two, school boundary and grade configuration at Westlake, MH Tobias, MP Brown, Woodrow Wilson, and Ben Franklin.
So, I will begin this item here, just with a brief introduction. So, in June of 2013, we received a report on a demographic study that was done in our school district. What that demographic study did for us, it identified certain school sites across the district that were experiencing impaction, meaning they're getting more crowded than they're able to handle. And most of the school sites that were identified in that time were found along the central portion of our school district, and so, we continue to engage with School Works to help us develop some different options of how to address that and how to prepare for our future. In November, we reviewed with the board some of the three initial options that were developed to reduce some of this overcrowding. Public meetings were held at that point at, at all of the schools along the center of our school district, Tobias, Brown, Wilson, Westlake, and Ben Franklin, to provide input from parents, staff, and the public. There were 45 written comments that were received, there were others that I received through email, and the board did receive a packet of signatures from parents at one school. So, taking into account many of those comments, we developed a fourth plan that was based on some of the input that was received. And just to review, we have current school boundaries. The, there is an overcrowding issue at MP Brown's school, their boundaries are too large, they're taking in more, there's more families with young children moving into that area, which is right in the center there, the pink center. Tobias is a very full school, however, it does not draw from its attendance boundaries, so we were working to see how we might be able to expand its attendance boundaries, hopefully into the MP Brown area, to relieve some of the MP Brown area from their overcrowding. And then, there were some messy lines between Westlake and Garden Village, where one side of the street was going to one school, the other side was going to another school, sometimes it was like by block on the same side of the street, and so, we took this opportunity to sort of clean up some of that area as well. The overall goal is to slightly decrease both Garden Village and MP Brown's attendance area, increase attendance areas for Tobias, and I think Woodrow Wilson sees a slight increase in their attendance boundary, because the area there north of John Daly currently is assigned to Westlake School, but most of those families choose to and want to attend Woodrow Wilson, and that's where they, that's where they go to school, so aligning that to reduce paperwork. Just a reminder again, the reasons for looking at some of these changes, we are aiming for class sizes in K3 to be at a maximum of 24 students. Over the last three years, we've been implementing and expanding the transitional kindergarten programs across the district, about two to three classrooms added every year. That's in addition to our kindergarten through 8th grade program. On the horizon, if you've been listening to the news much, there is a coupl-, there are a couple of proposals to expand school for, to include all 4-year-olds in a preschool program. It's not voluntary, it's not by space available, it become available. For us, that would mean finding space for an additional 500 to 600 students. To the students that we have now, that means about 30 classrooms that we have to identify. Hopefully, that proposal for expansion comes with, with money for facilities, but I am reticent to believe that, because it hasn't happened in the past. We'll, we'll, so we do need to begin to start thinking, if should that proposal go forth, how we will accommodate ourselves to do that. We are in a period of district growth. Five years ago, we were at about 5,700 students, now we're over 6,300 students. Again, MP Brown, Tobias, and Garden Village, at those numbers are impacted, and some have moved classrooms into library spaces, moved classrooms into what's traditionally not a classroom space, just to be able to accommodate the students attending. So, option four summary, the one that resulted from some of the input that we received, was to convert Brown, Tobias, and Wilson to a K5, and house their 6th grade students at Franklin Middle School. Westlake will continue to offer a 6th grade program. We would adjust the boundaries, as I mentioned, for Brown, Garden Village, Tobias, Westlake, and Wilson. And just another frequently asked question that we received in comments was, what if I live in one of the areas that the boundaries change, do I have to move schools? Nobody's, will be asked to move schools based on any changes, it's just for the new enrollees. So, new folks moving into the area, kindergartners moving in, and that, that's, those, so that's a long-term solution to the impact, impacted, because it takes five years, three to five years, for that to make a difference. Franklin Middle is already a 6'8" school, we would expand that 6th grade program as we discussed, but with some of these other shifts, the expectation for the number of classrooms at Franklin Middle would be reduced. The district has worked with the school to identify spaces that could be prepared for, to accommodate the 6th grade without reduction or loss of a science classroom or some of the other areas that were, that were raised. So, there's, yeah, there, we identified, and as soon as the board approves it, we can move forward in making that transition. And the fourth one is something that's been in the works for a little bit over a year, and, you know, was brought up again at the November meeting, and we revisited that with the school, is that Roosevelt would convert to a K8 program, they would, just briefly, and this is the next item, so, but we'd expand 6th grade in 2014, add 7th grade in 2015, add 8th grade in 2016, so it provides one year of planning for the 7th and the 8th grade programs coming forward. And Mr. Turner will speak on that at the next item. So, here's, here is what I was describing earlier. You have a list in front of you there of what streets might be shifted, how they might be shifted, do they have it with them?
Do you have a list?
No, we have it, you have it here. And again, the goal here is to expand the MH Tobias attendance area, so that they do not have to rely so much on outside, outside transfers, and, and also, for many families who were selecting Tobias already lived in that, in that area.
I think there's an error someplace here, if you don't mind me bringing, asking the question?
Sure.
M. Pauline Brown under the names of the streets, what's Sweetwater Drive?
Oh.
Is it Sweetwood Drive?
It probably is, I think Mr. Reynolds continually and consistently calls Sweetwood Sweetwater.
Sweetwater, okay, that's okay.
And you have corrected him three or four times already, but he...
And, so, it's only on the 1803 to 1819, the odd side of the street, so across the street, you go to another place?
You're looking at, yeah.
No, there's, wait, on the odd side, and, oh.
Yeah, it's both sides of the street.
So, it's both sides of the streets, okay.
I think right now, these were previously assigned to Garden Village, and there's another place where we're including everybody on the block instead of just one side of the block.
Then, Garden Village is Washington Street and Jennifer's Theatre. So, when, the people that, Garden Village are, it sounds like they're picking up more children?
They're picking up some of those streets where most of the students are already attending Garden Village because of the distance.
It says, it includes, my goodness, all kinds of typos here, includes, which were previously assigned to M. Pauline Brown.
Correct.
But that the students were, as I understand you saying, largely attending Garden Village just transfers?
They were largely selecting to attend Garden Village just transfers, yeah.
I'm asking the question about the ones that are listed. So, the ones from 88th Street and 89th, and all those were at one time going to M. Pauline Brown?
That's, that was the street that they were assigned, that was the school they were assigned to.
So, how mu-, so, they took some students out of Garden Village? Because you said they were already impacted, they're adding more?
So, Garden Village...
That's Tobias ones?
Yeah. So, there's a lot of students and families, well, families mostly, who live on those streets, that prefer to go to Garden Village, and so, they were transferring into Garden Village.
So, they're, they're anyway, you mean?
They're, they're attending there now, because it is, you know, a three or four-block walk instead of a six to seven-block walk to walk around, because unless, you know, or up the hill, up the stairs. So, anyway, so that's just trying to clean that up a little bit, so it's...
So, this is not additional, then?
No, this is just sort of based on what patterns of attendance are already.
I decided visions of, where are we going to put these kids?
Yeah, they're, they're mostly already there. And so, this is an attempt, and again, we can never predict the future, but we can do our best, and so, this is an attempt by Mr. Reynolds to see, what would it, what would it look like in the 14, 15 at each of our school sites, if we make some of these adjustments? And... So, we're, the goal is to try to get the high, more higher impacted schools lower. And there is some, you know, Susan B. Anthony and John F. Kennedy's school, they have worked a sort of overflow school sites for each other for the last many years, you know, when one grade level fills up, we, we offer space at the other one, and it's very simple at those schools, because of their proximity to each other.
They're so close.
They're so close to each other that when, when Susan B. Anthony's full at kindergarten, they take them at Kennedy, when Kennedy's full at 2nd grade, they take them at Susan B. Anthony. So, the next steps is, after the board approves these changes, both the grade configuration and the boundary changes, we'll begin communicating with parents and modifying all of our attendance documents to begin implementing the plan for the boundary changes. Again, we would...